Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for Thursday, January 15, 2015. We are being broadcast tonight via HKM cable. The agenda tonight is approval of minutes for December 18 and January 8. We have questions from the public regarding items not on the agenda. The Town Farm and Alm's House on Beale Street, the Town Deed, Town Administrator Bylaw Committee, appointments, Selectmen and Town Administrator reports, and then we will go into executive session to discuss an open-meeting law complaint. So, first item is the approval of the minutes, and I will...
I'll make a motion that we approve the January 8, 2015 minutes as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. And we're still holding on December 18? Okay. Questions from the public? Diane, come up and introduce yourself and...
Diane Travers.
Can you pull that up?
There we go. Diane Travers, 81 North Street. And I'm really here to bring it to everyone's attention about a sewer issue that's been ongoing for years, since we moved in to 81 North Street, which goes back to '05. But anyway, the most current issue is the, what got the term a Band-Aid approach to what we believe is a terrible sewer system underneath North Street to do with the Greenbush reconstruction. And there's reported a lot of gaps and whatever in the lines, and of course, one of them happens to be right in front of our house. So, the Band-Aid approach was every, and a lot of it also, I guess, was, there was a moratorium until 2015, so here we are again, because nothing was going to be done with the moratorium. That was totally...
And that was the moratorium that, in theory, they couldn't cut into North Street because it had been redone?
Yes, yes. The final pavement or whatever, after the Greenbush. So, the Band-Aid approach was to have the lines, all the sewer lines through North Street, certain ones, which of course, one was right in front of our house, be cleaned. And we sit probably lower to the ground than the condominiums that are up back to us. So, this started in January 2013. And every time the lines are jetted, we get a disgusting sewer smell in our house. And it happened again today, and I did write a letter to you all, but we're here because I, my husband and I are here, because I don't know if you really had time to read the letter, so we figured we'd come up and make the appearance.
Thank you.
So, it happened again today, and it permeated the house upstairs and downstairs. And the toilets bubble, and if the lids aren't closed, the water flows over. And so, I got on the phone, I told, you know, I spoke to Steve Dempsey, called the DPW, called your office, and Steve ended up coming up. He was asked by, I guess, Randy Sylvester to come up and see if there was a smell in the house. So, he did.
He did confirm it, by the way.
He did certainly confirm it. And this was about 35 minutes after the line was jetted.
Is it still there?
No. I would say, we went out around noon time, came back about 1:00, and it was still there. And then, but it's very slow to dissipate. I imagine it's a gas, and it, well, it is, it just is. And then, it was nice of Sue Sarnie, Susan Sarnie?
Sarnie, right.
Yeah, to come up, because she wanted to document it. And she came up, probably about 10:30, and she very much smelled it as well. So, that's where we stand, and we know the moratorium will be up. I don't know what's going to happen, but something has to be done, because we cannot sit there and smell this.
Steve confirmed it was very, quite disgusting, I think, as though...
Yeah, it was.
Because he came to Betty's office, and then I spoke to both of them.
Yeah.
So, why don't we do this? We've got your letter.
Okay.
When the Town Administrator comes back, we'll ask him to look at it, see if there's something that can be done in the short term, whether they can dig up a small piece of the street and maybe do a fix at your house while we wait to see with the longer term, because I think, I think everybody that's been part of this agrees, the real solution is going to be to redo North Street.
Yeah, I think so. And now, you know, we also got involved with the DEP because of the, and tried to stop the sewer line on Ship and Cottage, because it's going right down to the Mill Street Station, and it's just getting ground up and coming right back up. And Jerry and I are wondering if that's why the smell was really so intense, because more gases in there from more, I guess, if the sewer lines are in working order, are they, through Ship and Cottage now?
I believe they are.
Yeah. It supposedly, and the DEP did nothing, and of course, well, I'm not going to say, anyway. So, that's about it. That's about it.
Why don't we do that? And we'll get something in writing, get an analysis, and then ask you guys back in, the two, and we'll report out on it. Because this is really awful.
Yeah, and if you, I know all this stuff, the, of course, there was a camera report, too.
Yep.
And that should be all in file. Plus, there's a good letter here that Cindy Moore, who's the resident of the condo, and myself and Jerry made up to Jeff Gould, to the DEP, and it kind of summarizes quickly, but gives a very good detail of exactly what has happened, if anybody wants to review that letter, too.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
Thanks for listening.
I think we've said that to you every time that you've come.
Yeah, we've been very patient.
Did Mr. Dempsey opine as to what he thought might be going on there, or...
They, nobody knows why the smell is coming up through the toilets.
But it happens when there was some kind of forced cleaning of some mains?
It's a jetting, it's a forced cleaning, and as they do that, twice a year, they also put in a, not a disinfectant, but a chemical down at the station.
Bioncet.
And that's, that's a cleaning from a private source going into the public main, or is it...
It's going in Manhole 2.
Are you talking to Bioncet?
The jetting, the cleaning?
Jetting.
It's a big, some kind of a sewer cleaning truck, huge.
Yeah, they bring somebody in to do it.
And, and it happens when they do, I'm not quite sure where they, well, Manhole 1, I think, is close to Ship Street, and Manhole 2 is like, well, right at the end of our driveway, to the right, and that's the one that does it. And supposedly, the sag is more in front of, it's in front of our house, but to the left, toward Ship Street. But also, it was talked about that the smell, it might be coming up the lateral line up the driveway.
So, that's why this is going to take a little investigation?
Yeah. And one other thing we talked about, too, was opening, and Steve did it, there was a, there's a sewer pipe, you know, a cover pipe, in one of the residents' driveways. So, now he lifts that out to let some of the gases go out, but it was awful today.
Is this the worst it's ever been?
I would say, yes, close to, maybe like, the very first time they cleaned it, maybe, but this was, yeah, this was bad. So...
Thank you, and we will get back to you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you both for coming.
Thanks, Diane.
Okay. The Town Farm and Alm's House. Mr. Curley.
Good evening.
Beth?
Bob Curley, 1 Grisbill Lane, here on behalf of the Historic Commission, of which I'm the current chair, and with me is Beth Rockoff, who is our project manager with respect to the Town Farm. I'm going to provide a brief overview, and then turn the floor over to Beth, who I think has all of the details that you're probably really interested in tonight.
And we thank you both for a rather large package. And what I had done was, I went and got the two warrant articles that are impacted, as well as the recommended motion and the comment from the Advisory Committee, plus the transcript for us to read. So, it's yours.
By way, a brief history, a town meeting, 2013, Article 36, was inserted by Jim Clark and others. Mr. Clark is present tonight. He has been the driving force behind this project in his passion for memorializing those who were buried at the Town Farm. The town unanimously approved an investigation of the feasibility of erecting a monument to those who died or were buried in marked or unmarked graves at the Town Farm off Beale Street. We had a wonderful presentation by Alec McMillan that evening at Town Meeting about Alm's Houses in Hingham that I commend to anyone. Among the points that were made, and I'd also refer people to the comment, Hingham's actually had three Alm's Houses. The first one established in 1785 on Short Street, which remains in existence as a private residence. The second one, at the present location of GAR Hall, which was destroyed by fire, that was established in 1831, 1831. And then, the town acquired a 43-acre parcel off of Beale Street in 1832 for use as the Town Farm. That was acquired by the United States in 1943 in conjunction with efforts concerning World War II. The U.S. divested itself of the property in 1970. There was an HEW grant to Project Turnabout, which then used the property until 2004. And then, in 2004, seven acres was sold for development at the Back River, and the Town Farm was demolished in 2005, 2006. Mr. Clark has made extraordinary efforts to identify buried residents, and has come up with, I believe, over 68 death certificates. The Historical Commission, which I think had been provided?
Yeah.
In your package?
Well, I made copies of a couple of them, because there's an extensive packet.
Okay. And the Historical Commission has made efforts to identify the actual burial sites, both through onsite investigation, through consultation with Mass Historical, which has provided rough notes of John Richardson, which approximate or gives some idea of a burial site, but they're not particularly precise. We consulted aerial photos going back to pre-World War II years, and we actually inquired through the Hingham Journal for knowledge of residents who may remember where the burial sites were. And the end of our inquiries has been, we really have not been able to determine with any precision where the burial site, in fact, was. Michael Dyer from the Historical Commission has indicated that probably the only way to possibly do this is to use ground-penetrating radar, which is expensive, and of course, the site may be on the Hingham Mutual land, or it may be under Back River land. So, it's even, it's difficult to imagine where to start with such a project. We looked to involvement by the CPC for funding, but we received an opinion of Town Council indicating that CPC funds could not be used to create a monument, because that was not preserving history, it was creating history. We thought that if we could identify the actual site, that CPC funds could probably use to mark or delineate the site, but we haven't been able to do that. We've looked at a lot of different things in terms of monument direction, options, location, which Beth is going to address, but I think fundamentally, we're here looking for a budget and direction from you as to where to go from here. So, I'll turn it over to Beth at this point.
Hi, Beth Rockoff, 36 Pleasant Street. In the packet, there are a couple that are floating around in the audience. What I did was first start out with, Arthur Chu put together a design, which you can see in Attachment A, of a stone wall, which we, at one point, we thought we'd have some granite that was donated, but that has fallen through. But more to look like the steps up to the Heritage Museum with a brass plaque on it, with wording that was done by Alex McMillan, our town historian, to identify the Alm's House and the purpose and why it was there. The budget for that came in higher than we had hoped with, as you can see, Ray Dupre was going to do the wall for $10,000, and then the plaque would be about, almost $1,200. We had thought that it might be nice to start to mark historic asset identification markers with something that would identify that, and we were hoping that the Selectmen would agree to allow us to use the town seal as an emblem on a marker that would then be designated as an historic marker, so that if people walking around town, if they see a sign or a plaque with the town seal on it, would know that it's something to do with historic asset of the town, and would then look at it in that way. So, as we move forward, we'd like to know if that would be okay with the Selectmen. So, once we knew that it was going to be close, as you can see, to 225 for the wall, we moved on to looking at putting a boulder similar to what is on our Hingham Center with the marker of the fields. And that came out much less. In order to get a boulder, however, they, to purchase one, was going to be up to $4,000. But under the kind, after talking to Pal up at the new Lexus dealer, he put me in touch with Dave Bistel, who promised that he would provide us with a boulder, any size that we wanted, dropped at the location at which we want for nothing. So, that took that budget, that took that budget off. So, we then moved on to just the plaque, which was going to be $3,300 with the writing about the Alm's House on it. And there would be an additional, if we decided to put the seal on the thing, it would be an additional cost of $500 for that. What I was also hoping as we move forward, since that was going to be approximately $3,800 total with the free boulder, if that was the choice, that we might identify, since we know the placement of the first Alm's House and the second Alm's House, and to me, the history of this town providing and taking care of the poor and those not as well-off or any of the inmates, I think is something that we should be proud of. And so, if we could put a marker at the first site and second site, reminding the town of taking care of its townspeople, that maybe some of that will wash off, and the people that are still here will remember to do the same thing. So, I looked into Catskills Casting about putting a street sign at those sites, and there is a misprint for two of them. It is not 3388, it's 3588. But to put a street sign in that would identify the first Alm's House and the second Alm's House, each one would total $1,294 with the poll, the shipping, and the cost of the monument. There would be a one-time charge if we decided to do the seal on it of $525. Once that logo is printed at that site, any further street signs moving forward could have that seal on it no extra cost. So, in the packet, there is also an example of one of the street signs, picture of the I included the list with Jim Clark's hard work and Eileen McCracken. They went through and found 68, which we have documented, death certificates buried either at, says at the crypt or the Town Farm. One body in 1995, I believe, when they were redoing Hingham Mutual. The workmen were told to use this structure, which is the crypt that is still on the property, as sort of an office space, and they found a body in the crypt at the time. So, nobody knows exactly where those bodies are. There's some talk that it is literally by the mutual, but as Bob said, we're not sure of the actual designation. As for the placement, there's been varying opinions. Some would like to see it up on Beale Street, so it's direct. Because of the placement of where the Alm's House, it was before it was taken down, there is that sheltery path that goes down to Bear Cove. I'm not sure who owns the land, whether it's parkland, town land, rec department, the actual, it's not Hingham Mutual, but that might be a site as people walk down to walk around the Back River, that they could see the boulder or whatever designation marker you decide on, to remember that this was the Town Farm, and people were taken care of. So, if, ideally, if you decide on, say, putting the boulder in, and then putting two street markers, the completion is still under $10,000. I don't know what you're willing to give us for a budget. The total there was approximately $700, $7,000. So, I don't know where the money's going to come from, seeing it's not allowed to come from CPC anymore.
And it can't come from the Historic Preservation Fund.
Because that's CPC money.
And then, Greenbush can't be used for Greenbush. So, where it's going to come from, we're going to have to wait till the Town Administrator comes back and let him do some searching, because right now, there's two potential places. Capital Outlay, which is ongoing right now, which is why it was important to get you all here, and then, secondly, a reserve fund transfer.
Okay.
So, let's recap what you're asking for, and then we'll open it up for questions. So, we committed through Town Meeting to creating a monument.
Right.
So, you're looking for a monument of some type, and then looking for, for markers on...
On the two original sites.
And perhaps others, as they come about.
Yep.
And use of the town seal.
Correct.
And are those the real?
Boulder.
And the boulder? Well, that would be the monument.
So, basically, we were tasked to put an Alm's House marker at the Town Farm, basically, is what I, and so, that structure would either be the boulder or the wall, or if you wanted, just a street-designated sign. To put the wording that really describes the Alm's House and the purpose of the Alm's House on a street sign would be rather difficult. So, I think some type of larger monument, so that that could be included, would be nice.
I kind of like the boulder. Speaking in other terms, but I think that's pretty neat.
So, that marker, but to complete the project, I think, the history of the Alm's House in town, it would be nice to put the additional two signs, street signs.
That would set the stage for using this type of marker for other things.
For future reference.
Are there, Bob, does the Historic Commission have any rules for markers in town or anything?
Well, there has been some discussion among the various town bodies about sign uniformity. There are tourist itinerary signs that are uniform in various locations around the town, but I don't think we presently have anything that relates to uniformity. I think it would be a good idea for the town to have some uniformly recognized way of marking historical sites. And I do want to mention that there may conceivably be a private property issue with respect to the first Short Street sign, so that would have to be addressed.
There is a piece of land I went by specifically in front of the gas station and the end building where Roy Eldridge and the Hingham Center Realty used to be, that is town-owned land, I'm told, that would be able to accommodate a street sign that's not cluttered with lots of other street signs. At the corner of Short Street, and I'm not sure what that street is, that turns into Levitt Street, where there is a number of signs there, but there is a piece of land farther up that is open.
You can see that Beth has been there before.
Many times. I thank you, I'll open it up for questions, but I thank you so much for all the work you all have done on this. And Beth, and Jim Clark in the back there, and Alex.
And Alex.
And Eileen.
And Eileen.
This is like, this is really a labor of love, and it was also getting this to Town Meeting. So, we do have to do something. We committed to doing it.
I also would like to thank Scott McMillan, who is one of the trusts of the GAR Hall, and he has brought it toward the trust as far as allowing us to put a sign if it gets decided by the Selectmen on the piece of property, and they have agreed to allow us to do that.
Excellent. Thank you, Scotty. And also, thank you for taking care of Bear Cove Park.
Yeah, there was that row of shelter cast that is now, it's only about 20 feet wide, goes down between...
I should have asked you that question as well when I spoke with you before, then I didn't, but thank you.
Let me open it up for questions, comments, from the two Pauls. Paul?
You know, I like the idea of the sign motif in terms of expanding that recognition of other areas in town going forward into the future. Ms. Foley reminded me that Town Clerk is the keeper of the seal, and I'm sure that that could be worked out rather well. I remember on the planning board approving a subdivision where there was a grave stone, set of stones down on Canterbury Street. Go ahead.
Lowway for you?
No, go ahead.
Paul?
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for the time you've all taken. I've had the pleasure of talking to Jim Clark about some other issues, where he began to educate me on the history of the area and the history of the Alm's House. So, it's, I took a keen interest in it right away. I'm just glad that you folks are really caring for all this thing, and whatever we can do to help.
Thank you.
Thank you for also teaching us, there were three Alm's Houses. I didn't know that till Alex started educating me on that, and it's not in some of the Hingham History books at all.
It's there, but...
It's hard to find.
Oh, thank you.
Well, come on up. No, no, up and tell us who you are. We all know who you are.
Alec McMillan, I'm the Town Historian. And I spent some time with Jim Clark, helping him deal with the frustration of getting this issue addressed. I said, "Well, what we'll do, we'll do an article for Town Meeting, and that will raise it to the top of everybody's agenda, and it'll be acted upon." And so, we drafted an article, and here we are today. But what I had in mind, which isn't necessarily what the Historical Commission or Mr. Clark had in mind, was that we would, through this process, establish a more or less standard sign or marker that the town could use, various historical markets, historic districts, and so on and so forth. And it was with that in mind that I drafted some language with the Historical Commission, and what I was looking at as a model were these signs, which were put up by the Commonwealth Massachusetts Tricentennial Commission in 1930. And we have several of them in Hingham, and there are other places around the Commonwealth. And it's a standard, including the Commonwealth's seal at the top. And I thought, "Well, we could have something similar for items or areas of local significance here in Hingham, with, maybe with a town seal on it." And so, that, the language that I submitted is about as long as the language would appear on one of those signs, which, and I think that makes sense. And you should also know, if you haven't, because this is the first time perhaps it's come to you, is that under Article 40 adopted by the Town Meeting, as on the study committee for that, the Selectmen are to establish rules and regulations, standards, if you will, for signs or markers in the town. And I think this might be an occasion for you to just take a look at Article 40 and see, and right near the end of it, and to see what you might have in mind, because I think you should have a standard sign. I'm not much, I'm not much on the boulders and all that kind of thing. I think we should have a standard marker, maybe relatively low impact, but people, when they see it, they'll know what it is, and if they're all the same, they'll know it's an official town marker, and they can go and look to see what that site is. So, that's where I would... and they can go and look to see what that site is. So that's where I would hope that you would focus your attention. I know there's some thought and perhaps some inquiry as to whether or not CPC funds can be used for a monument. Well, maybe they can't be, but I'm sure they can be used. They have been used for markers on historic houses or markers on buildings that are restored and so on, and there's a sign put on it. And in fact, the Historical Commission, several years ago, had, and I think since then again, has had a certain amount of money distributed to it for minor issues. I don't know, $50,000 or something like that to be spent on dealing with things that don't necessarily rise to the level of being a special article, or so the CPC wouldn't have to deal with them. And one of those issues on their laundry list was signs and markers. So I think that the, it's my opinion, but I'd check again to see whether or not you couldn't just put up a sign or a marker at a historic district or at a location where some event occurred. And if it would be a standard sign or marker that the town could establish through a hearing or something that the selectmen hold in conjunction with the Historical Commission, I think that'd be the best way to do it.
Thank you, Alex. Any more questions? Paul, are you back?
Yeah.
Who, where?
Jim Clark's got to stand up.
Oh, Mr. Clark, come up.
Go ahead, ask your question.
No, no, come here. Come on, come up and introduce yourself and so that we can actually thank you very much for what you did. This is a labor of love.
Hi, Jim Clark, 79 Tower Road. This began when I shopped this around to the previous Board of Selectmen, and there was no complaints or anything, because I thought I was under the $20,000 minimum. Now, I appreciate the work everybody's done, but they're all bringing forth their proposal. One is a rock, another one is a bunch of signs, and I appreciate that. We need replacement signs, and you might as well have the town logo on it. This one here, they didn't like. Then along came some free granite, and we designed a granite one similar to this, size and proportion. And I was told at the time that this should go out on the street in your face. It should show, so people can see it. And now we're back to Shelter Path again. It's going to get busy there when that Quinn fire truck comes around there on the emergency access. So keep that in mind when you want to place it. All the land belongs to you, right up to where they originally decided it would going to be Terry Drive, right in the corner there. Maybe take a section of fence down, and it would be right there. Doesn't need to be this. I shopped this around for prices, and we got $10,000, $12,000, $14,000, something like that. And that was without the signage, whether it be bronze, plastic, whatever, or engraved. Alex, come up with some nice wording to go on that. Beth had a suggestion. We put a picture of the place on that. We didn't know whether we could, but I think I have some further information that we may be able to do that, on a granite, on a stone, on a whatever you want to put it on. So before, it's been two or three years now, so rather than jump in tonight, let's give it a little more thought.
Okay.
If everybody's on the same page, let's get to third base.
I think we all agree we have to do something. We committed to Town Meeting.
Yes, we did.
Could I ask the Historical Commission to do two things? Number one, make the recommendation for what it should look like. And then, two, make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, and I don't know if any other commissions, committees need to be involved, on what a historic marker should look like. And I would think we would want the seal on it. We'll see how we can talk to Eileen. It makes sense.
Back to basic history. This is about a building that was the town's oldest building, right? And we buried all those people there. It was the only town-owned cemetery, as it were. So keep that in mind when you're making your decisions.
We will do something.
Thank you very much.
Soon. And hopefully, in this budget cycle, whether we have to go to Capitol or whether we actually are going to use a reserve fund transfer when we get the, if you can come up with the gross numbers and make a recommendation to us, does that sound reasonable?
Fine.
Paul, do we need to have more specifics as far as, do we do a boulder? Do we do a sign? Do we do a?
I think we'd leave it to you to come back and tell us what the Historic Commission would like to see, because it is historic marker.
We'll put it on our agenda for, I think we'll be on the second Monday of February.
Maybe, and why don't we put you guys on the agenda for the end of February?
All right, or we could simply.
After we get through the warrant articles. Does that sound? Really, any, from the audience, anyone want to make any comments on this? Or any thoughts on boulder, wall, or anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. If anybody wants to see all of the information that they have collected, which is a phenomenal amount, we'll have it in the Selectmen's office, because these are now documents attached to our minutes.
Can I have the coffee tomorrow?
Next, I am very excited about this. Nelson Ross and the committee to talk about a proposed Town Administrator Bylaw.
Oh, hey, Nelson.
Nelson, amazing.
May I sit in the big chair?
You may sit in the big chair. And the rest.
Let me introduce.
I was going to say, the rest of your committee.
The rest of our committee.
Okay. One is in absentia.
Karen Johnson is to my immediate left, and David Pace is beside Karen. Tom Carey is unable to be here tonight, but he is certainly here in spirit, and we know as sure as we're sitting here, he is home, and he's going to be critiquing us.
All of us.
No question.
All of us.
Okay. Let me begin by saying that, a little history. At the October 16, 2014 Board of Selectmen meeting, at your initiation, Madam Chairman, the Board of Selectmen voted to form a Town Administrator Bylaw Committee, appointing Tom Carey, David Pace, Chairman of the Personnel Board, me, and the Chair of the Advisory Committee, or her designee. The Chair of the Advisory Committee is prohibited from serving on another board under, I believe it's the Advisory Committee's rules. Karen Johnson was her designee. In speaking about the importance of creating the Town Administrator Bylaw Committee, Madam Chairman, you noted that a principal recommendation of the 2010-2013 Government Study Committee was that the authority of the Town Administrator be clarified. You also stated the bylaw would go before the 2015 Annual Town Meeting. Our committee did not have the usual one year to do our work. We had only three months before January 20, 2015, the date the warrant would close. We held 15 meetings, including a brief meeting this evening. We met with knowledgeable people who provided valuable input, gathered important materials, including pertinent laws, prior Town Meeting votes, representative charters, special acts and bylaws from other communities, prior Government Study Committee reports, other materials, and much valuable data. By the way, we're going to take all of that material and put it into a supplement so that it's available if anybody wants to see, as Paul Gannon knows, the legislative history. We held a number of deliberation meetings. At the end, we felt we were fully informed and were in a position to prepare and present a high-quality bylaw to you, along with a worthy report. We hope you agree. I am not going to wait until the end to express our deep appreciation to Betty Foley, who gave us invaluable, magnificent support. What we have produced never would have been possible without her efforts. Our presentation this evening is divided into three segments. I will lead off giving an introduction, some history relating to the role, responsibility, and authority of the Hingham Town Administrator, and explain how we approached our task. It's important that we convey not only to you what we are proposing, but also the why of what we're proposing and how we got there. David will discuss in broad strokes the proposed bylaw and recommendations for its administration, and speak about the principles we followed in drafting the proposed bylaw. Karen will then go over details of the proposed bylaw, and I will give some concluding comments. In the 25 years that Hingham has had an executive secretary for a few years and a Town Administrator, the town has never had a clear, comprehensive statement which articulates the role, responsibilities, and authority of the Town Administrator. This has presented significant problems at times for the town. The history is detailed on pages two through five of our report. On page four, we state, "The problems inherent in the absence of codification and clarification of the duties and powers of the Town Administrator are many and obvious. Confusion over roles leads to gaps in administration, promotes unnecessary misunderstandings and confrontations, leaves employees and the public unsure of lines of authority and chain of command." And the public, I'm sorry, and obscures accountability of elected and appointed officials. Without codification, people of good faith, who may have differing views about how to exercise and allocate authority, may find themselves at loggerheads and subject to criticism because expectations are unclear. At the outset of our work, we realized that any bylaw we would propose must conform to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 41, Section 23A. That is the statute under which a Hingham Town Administrator is appointed. Town administrators appointed under that section are required to carry out the will and mandates assigned to them by the Board of Selectmen. They perform the duties and exercise the authority assigned them. They have no inherent or independent authority of their own. It's whatever the selectmen assign them. Fortunately for us, there existed a history of significant authority having been regularly assigned by the Hingham Board of Selectmen to and carried out by Hingham Town Administrators. In drafting the proposed bylaw, we took the authority which had been assigned to our Town Administrator over the years, described it in detail, codified it, and incorporated it into a new Article 5B, I should say, new proposed Article 5B of the town bylaws which you have before you. We believe it is time, indeed past time, that the Town Administrator's role, responsibilities, and authority be formalized and be presented to Town Meeting for adoption. If the bylaw changes we propose are enacted by Town Meeting, we ask the Board of Selectmen to vote to assign all of the authority described in Article 5B, or to explain to the citizens any elements, any element which is not being assigned or which has been modified and the reasons for the departure. With that introduction, I'll turn it over to David.
Okay. Thank you, Nelson. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm just going to touch on a couple of things, some thoughts we had as we approached the bylaw itself, and then some of the overarching principles that guided our deliberations over what duties and authority ought to be assigned to the Town Administrator in the bylaw itself. Unlike me, Karen will follow with the real substance. Mine is just a lot of fluff. So hers is more interesting. But as Nelson said, I mean, our starting point obviously was the statute, Chapter 41, Section 23A, which authorizes you as the Board of Selectmen to appoint a Town Administrator to act on your behalf and exercise what duties and authorities you assign to that person. So in short, you could say the TA's authority derives from the Board of Selectmen and is dependent upon your delegation of authority. So working within those confines of the statute and being very cognizant that what we proposed wanted to be consistent with a Board of Selectmen Town Administrator form of government and not another form of government, we came upon the bylaw, which Karen will go through in a lot more detail. And as Nelson said, as part of the bylaw, what we do is call upon the Board of Selectmen to assign to the Town Administrator the duties and authorities that are enumerated within the actual bylaw itself. Another consideration of ours, we're very mindful of Hingham traditions and past practices. In particular, as pointed out by a number of individuals, the tradition of the citizen volunteer, and very cognizant of how much volunteer has meant to this town throughout its history and continue to mean to this town as we looked at the bylaw itself. We also paid particularly close attention to a number of existing documents, whether or not they are still currently in effect or not, that govern the TA roles and responsibilities, as well as the relationship to the Board of Selectmen, and those were the Board of Selectmen Code of Conduct, the policy that's designated the Town Administrator roles and responsibilities, as well as the TA job description and the customs and practices that were described to us by many current former selectmen, as well as Town Administrators. And so, you know, as Nelson said, I think we really started with what exists today. We tried to codify that and then work with that as the basis for our proposal to you, and I think we feel comfortable that we are very consistent with what is current practice within the town of Hingham. As we looked at the actual duties and authority assignment, we were guided by a number of overriding, overarching principles, I should say. One, you know, I will call what I call kind of the divide between policy and administration. It is very clear that policy is the exclusive domain of the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen, if you will, acts as the Chief Executive Officer of the town. I think it's also very clear that administration is the domain of the Town Administrator. If you will, a Town Administrator acts as your Chief Administrative or Operating Officer. And as such, the Town Administrator, in many ways, is responsible for the day-to-day management, the administration and supervision of the Town Departments and the employees within the town, and really driving the results and the effectiveness of the town. In the statute, I think we try to define that line as clearly as we can. It's not easy to do, to do that, to define that type of divide. But in the words of one person, or maybe more than one, we met, we felt it was important to demonstrate concreteness. We needed a clear attempt at defining what the role should be and what that dividing line is between policy and administration. But ultimately, as was pointed out, and as we all know, the success really depends on the collaboration, cooperation, and trust between all the parties. A second thing that I think guided us and struck us was that Hingham has grown tremendously since the adoption of the Town Administrator over 25 years ago. You know, it is a multimillion-dollar operation. I mean, I was told that with the school, we're roughly $100 million business operation. That's a big business. It's very large. It's very complex. It needs a professional, full-time management. It needs a strong leader, a strong leader with experience in leading organizations, an understanding of municipalities, an understanding of state and federal laws and how they impact the town, a great experience in human resources, people management, interpersonal skills, and financial acumen. And once we have that leader, we need to give that leader the tools necessary to lead and to drive an organization. That could be within the realm of hiring, managing people, which is probably the most important for any manager or leader. And in doing so, helping to establish a culture within the town that is supported by the Board of Selectmen of a fair and even-handed treatment of its employees and other issues. Clearly, the person would need the appropriate authority with respect to the budget procurement and other matters as well. And as Nelson referred to in his opening remarks, that there's a chain of command, and I think it requires everybody to kind of respect each other's role and respect that chain of command for it to function. And I think without that respect or without that acknowledgement of the chain of command, it all breaks down very quickly. Another principle that we were driven by was the need for Hingham Another principle that we were driven by was the need for Hingham to continue to attract high-caliber individuals to serve as Board of Selectmen, as our current selectmen, as well as as a town administrator. There were a number of former selectmen who kind of pointed out to us that they think the demands of the job in some time will actually diminish the pool of candidates who would be willing to run for the position of selectman. The time demands are just too much. We think with that, creating that correct divide between policy and administration, it helps that issue. It puts the selectmen's focus clearly on policy, big-picture issues, and quite frankly, where it should be, on the most important things. After spending a large part of my life in corporate America, I realized that there's a lot of day-to-day things that take up a lot of your time that you wish you didn't have to deal with, and they're very important, yet they're better left to other people at times because you need to focus on other long-term future issues. And if you're busy dealing with, excuse my French, the corporate BS, you're not focused on the big picture. And so, how do you create that divide? And as I said, you also need to attract, not currently, but a high-caliber individual that serves as TA, and we had that experience before. And to do so, it was remarked over and over that you need to invest meaningful authority in the town administrator and clearly articulate what that person's roles, responsibilities, and authority are in a meaningful document that just can't be revoked or replaced by a simple vote. It has to have more depth than that. I think, quite frankly, we were lucky that Ted was in the system before, because I don't know that we would have found somebody of that caliber had we not, had we had to go out and search. I guess maybe the last point I'll make is that, just say, it's not personal. We focus very much on the position of town administrator and the relationship to the Board of Directors. We didn't focus on any of the incumbents, the current people in those positions, or any individuals at all. We tried to very hard to create a bylaw that will serve as guidance to anyone who sits in any of those chairs in the future, and will allow for successful collaboration over the next 25 years, as we've had over the last 25 years in that role. And I think, as Nelson said, we feel very comfortable that what we're proposing is very consistent with past practice, and all of the articulated duties and authorities should be assigned to the town administrator. So with that, I'll turn it to Karen, who'll actually say something substantive.
Bring it on home. Well, as you can tell from Nelson and David's remarks, this was really a very interesting and really thoughtful process. We really took a big step back to consider the role of town administrator, to consider the underlying tenants of Hingham Open Town Meeting Government, and then came all the way forward to the proposal that we put before you tonight. So first, I'd just like to say it was a real privilege to serve on this committee with Dave Pace, the Chair of the Personnel Board, Nelson Ross, and Tom Carey, the Elder Statesman of the town of Hingham. And a couple of times when I would leave Town Hall, I'd think to myself, other lawyers would actually pay money for the CLE credit that I was getting here in Town Hall, and all Nelson had me do was really work over the holidays, so some things never change. You know, and I also appreciated being part of this effort. I think this is a really important conversation for the town to have, and for the town to have this spring, and so I appreciated being part of the effort to bring this forward. You heard a little bit about our process, so I'd like to share with you now our thought process and deliberation around drafting the actual language on the page, both the structure of the proposed bylaw, as well as the substance of the provisions. So how did we do it? As you heard from Dave, we looked at what exists. We looked at past practice, and we looked at what has been written down, the role of the town administrator, the job description of the town administrator, the code of conduct. You'll see some of that language actually verbatim reflected in proposed Article 5B. We also looked at governing documents from our 20 comparator towns, as well as the other 17 AAA communities in Massachusetts. We focused on the governance of the other AAA communities, intuitively feeling that financial stability is built on a foundation of efficient and effective administration of town government. We parsed these provisions and added those reflective of our 25 years of practice, and those we felt that reflected professional TA's tools of the trade. So if you take a look at the actual bylaw itself, there are two main sections. The first is the appointment and qualifications of the town administrator, and the second are the duties that we would expect the Board of Selectmen would delegate to the town administrator. Section A focuses on hiring. You'll notice that we broke that bylaw up into sections where there would be a greater role for the Board of Selectmen in the hiring of the Chief of Police, the Fire Chief, and the Superintendent of Public Works, lesser role in the hiring of other department heads, and really fully delegating the authority for other appointments to the town administrator. The idea here was, if the town administrator's going to be the chief operating officer, that person needs to build a team, and that team needs to be responsive to that person. So that was sort of our thinking in laying out this hiring section of the bylaw. In B is the budget process, which is really taken verbatim from existing town of Hingham documents. C is the procurement of materials, services, supplies, and equipment, again, taken from the existing role and job description. And then D, the section D is actually the tools of the trade that David referred to. If you're going to be the chief operating officer, what are the kinds of authorities and responsibilities you need to have available to you in order to make town government go? And then in addition, you'll see there are some suggestions for ancillary amendments. I think when you get four lawyers in the room looking at bylaws, you know, we're sort of lucky we only ended up with these few amendments, but part of what we wanted to create was a full circle here. So if it is the expectation of Town Meeting that these authorities and responsibilities be delegated to the town administrator, as Nelson said, we created a reporting article where the Board of Selectmen would tell Town Meeting every year, here's what we've delegated, here's what we've changed, and here's what we haven't delegated. And then we've created full transparency for Town Meeting to understand how their town government will be administered. So, you know, at the end of the day, right, you can write as many words on a piece of paper as you can, but as we heard from all of you, and we heard from all of the folks that we talked to, town government's a team sport, and so we would trust that these words, this article, these articles would be implemented in, as David said, the spirit of collaboration and cooperation that has really marked at least the last 25 years, if not our entire history.
Thanks, Karen. A few other important points. If our proposed Article 5B, the bylaw, and the amendments to Articles 4 and 5A of the town bylaws are adopted by Town Meeting, the town will nevertheless remain at a severe disadvantage whenever it needs to recruit a new town administrator. A town with a three-member Board of Selectmen and a bylaw that ultimately makes the town administrator's authority dependent on the Board cannot attract highly qualified applicants in today's marketplace. Positions of town manager and town administrator under special acts, created under special acts, are far more attractive and desirable to professionals in this field. This has been confirmed by people experienced in hiring and recruiting professionals in the field. And I had this experience myself. I was on the screening committee for the selectmen to seek a successor to Charlie Costello. We met with two consultants who told us straight out, you are not going to attract the best candidates. I said, what do you mean? Hingham is a great town, AAA bond-rated, financially stable, excellent management, went through the whole list, and he said exactly what I just said. As long as the authority of the town administrator is subject to the discretion, if you will, of the selectmen, and that's what the statute I referred to earlier requires, we will not attract the best candidates. Another point, Hingham prizes its AAA bond rating. It has benefited the town financially. In its last rating, Standard &amp; Poor's stated, quote, "We view the town's management conditions as strong, with good policies that exist in most areas," and the next words are important, "although not all might be formalized or regularly monitored by government officials." Certainly, the rating agencies should view the enactment of the local bylaw which we are proposing as a positive change. However, most other AAA communities in Massachusetts have either a special act or a charter solidifying professional administration, so a traditional local bylaw in which professional management depends so heavily upon discretionary delegation by a shifting board, and I don't mean shifting in the sense of, I mean, we have a new selectman elected frequently. It may not be enough for us to maintain our stellar reputation and our rating. Let me, give me a moment. One final point, were it not for the limitations imposed by the strictures of state law on the town's ability to act solely by local bylaw, our committee would have recommended a much stronger bylaw, less dependent on the will of the selectmen, and more explicit about professional managerial authority. Many of our comparable communities and neighbors, most of them as a matter of fact, have already exercised their home rule powers and adopted special acts governing the authority of their town administrators, or have created town manager positions without sacrificing their democracy. By drafting a special act with the authority of the town administrator, the Hingham likewise could do more to improve its management and attract the best managerial talent and protect its AAA bond rating, but that's for another day. Okay. We have no doubt that our proposed Article 5B will benefit the town. We are asking you to vote tonight that the Board accepts what we have prepared and will make the necessary filing before January 20 for inclusion in the 2015 Town Meeting warrant. That is the proposed Article 5B and the proposed amendments to Articles 4 and 5A of the town of Hingham bylaws. We recognize, even though I gave you drafts a couple of days ago, that this is short notice, and that you may not have fully digested all of the details. So our committee is prepared to file it, if you would prefer. Thank you very much.
I don't think we'll have to worry about that.
Okay. I just think, you know, one point of clarification may be that the inclusion, voting to include the amended articles in the warrant, at this point, doesn't speak to the merits of the proposal. It just means that we'll be able to have the conversation this morning.
All I can say is fantastic, seriously, for the amount, and you did meet at night, on weekends, at different buildings to get this done. I think this is a fantastic proposal. It is a long time in coming. However, we got here, it doesn't matter at this point, we're here. Back in the Government Study Committee that I was on, it really, and I, bravo to you all going through the material, because the stack of paper I have at home, I'm not, is this thick, from this, it seriously is, because I kept every piece. There is a lot out there, but this positions us very, very well for the future. I know the three of us may have some input, but that's after, I'm hopeful that my colleagues will also join me in moving this to the warrant, as it is. We can fiddle with it after, but I've read all of it, and it's fantastic. The history that you all gave is so right on. I also like the piece where you report to Town Meeting, and I assume that's in the report of the Board of Selectmen. One of the issues over the years is the delegated powers that nobody seems to remember as they happen. So this codifies everything. I just, thank you very, very much. I'll open it to my two colleagues. Paul?
Which one?
You.
Lady and gentlemen, thank you, thank you so much for doing this. I read some of the minutes that came out of the meetings that you held, and I found them quite interesting. And your accumulated years of service to the town are well reflected in this document, so thank you again. Look forward to seeing it pass at Town Meeting.
Yeah, I'm very impressed. I know the time that you have to take out to do things like this, and I'm not sure everybody does at home, but it's amazing what you folks could put together, and putting together different perspectives is not easy. So I appreciate, I did read it, and was very impressed by it. You know, I will say that, David, on your point about the big picture, it is helpful because there are times where we do get tugged, maybe looking out for the best interest of the town, but we get tugged away from the big picture. But I also will tell you that I'm also, to a small degree, a small-picture person, because if there's someone in the town that calls me or reaches out to me that needs help as an elected official, that's the way I was kind of brought up and taught, that I want to help people. So there's a nice balance there, hopefully, in what we put together, but thank you.
And I'll echo what Paul says, having run customer service for what was, in the old days, the phone company, if anybody remembers that, is when customers called, you did dive in, no matter what your level was. And that was expected, but I think what you've brought is a nice balance. I'm sure we'll have little tweaks or questions for you that we'll have conversations as we move towards the recommended motion. But I can't thank you enough for the time that the four of you have given up. And our two elder statesmen, the years of service that you bring to this, both you and Tom in the personnel world, in the municipal personnel world, because Tom was on the Personnel Board at one time, which was one of the very strongest they've ever had, what you've seen over the years helps form this, so I can't thank you enough. We will have another public hearing when we talk about the warrant article, so we'd invite everybody to come back after you've had a chance to read all of it and digest it. So I think it's great. I can take a few questions from the audience, but I don't think anybody has seen the document. You're going to love it when you see it. It's very comprehensive, it's concrete, there's no, there's not a whole lot of gray area, but there's always gray area when you're dealing with personnel, as anybody that has. However, I think it's great. So if there's no questions, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that we include the proposed Articles for Town Administrator Bylaw in the warrant for the 2015 Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all, and I understand you've got a Personnel Board meeting, too. Do you have any other remarks?
No, Karen, you just want to mention-
We just want to be clear that, Paul, when you moved it, it would be, it would be the packages presented, so it would be the new section, the new Article 5B, Article 5A, and Article 4, right?
Do you want me to restate it?
No, just-
Can we just-
It's everything in the staple, right?
She'll reflect it in the minutes.
Okay.
If anybody's got any questions or thoughts once you read it, Nelson, do you want them to come to you?
They can come to any one of us.
Okay, well, let's pick one place. You?
Preferably Nelson.
I actually vote, I vote for Tom Carey, actually.
I see, oh, that's good, because Tom's not here.
Better.
I like that.
I need to say that I will not be here for a couple of months after, you know, so, you know, if there are calls within the next couple of weeks, I can take them, otherwise I may not be able to.
What would be a good place to centralize all- What would be a good place to centralize all the questions or comments?
Betty.
In your spare time?
You thought you were off the hook?
She's got, she has an unbelievable pile of work on her desk. So Betty, you okay with that?
I'm fine with redirecting calls.
So I look forward to everyone's comments and thoughts and any tweaks they might think, but thank you all very much, and thank you, Tom, at home.
Thank you, Tom, thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Want to do first one?
I'll move that we appoint Matthew J. McGonigal to the Scholarship Fund Committee to fill an unexpired term ending on June 30, 2016.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Any opposed?
I'll move to appoint John T. Fitzsimmons to the Scholarship Fund Committee for a three-year term ending June 30, 2018.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'll move that we appoint John Bailey to the Country Club Management Committee for a three-year term ending on June 30, 2018.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to appoint Ben Kerman, MD, to the Energy Action Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have two other votes to take and then we'll do selectmen town administrator reports.
Yeah.
So, should I make a motion?
Sure.
So I'll move to rescind the vote taken in the October 9, 2014 Executive Session Regarding Real Estate.
I will second that, but I just want to have a brief discussion. This is a, I think, a continuation of the discussion that we've had last week relative to what's discussed in open session and what's discussed in executive session. You know, it's my understanding if we're involved in land negotiations, that's a proper subject. And in the course of the discussion about the December 18 meeting, Mr. Gannon, I think, found out that our October 9 meeting where we met in executive session and took a vote was something that we really didn't have to do because we simply didn't. So I think that vote that we're rescinding was a vote to authorize Ted Alexiades and Susan Murphy to-
And me. And me.
Okay, and Ms. Lauder to continue with the negotiations with Boston Gulf. So we're trying to correct the record, we're trying to do, follow the law so that we're not engaging in inappropriate behaviors behind closed doors. And for that, I'm fully supportive of any effort that keeps the government clean, so.
And these votes are not any different than have been taken over the past years, but on a go-forward basis, we're going to adhere to what the Attorney General has now clarified.
Just briefly, and what I'm trying to do, as Paul said, is try to make sure that there's clarity, because when I spoke to town council about one issue, we started talking about the whole process of appointing and votes in executive session, and he sent me another copy of the executive session breakdown. And so in some respects, as Paul says, we don't need to do that, and in many respects, if we are going to vote, we should vote in open session. And for better or for worse, it's probably something that we didn't understand going back well before October. But had that being said, I make that motion? I think you seconded it.
I did.
Okay, and that was the further discussion?
And the only other thing I'd add is a proposal, that perhaps we invite town council in and kind of discuss the open meeting and how it interrelates with the executive session, just so we all hear it and everybody sees it.
No problem. Let's do it after the warrant articles.
Sure.
That's a good idea.
Soon.
He's been very helpful in many respects and, you know-
And just one other piece, talking to the Attorney General's office, this particular kind of vote, over the last month, in fact, we were the most proactive, where the day after we took the vote, I fired off a question to him and talked to him the next day. They're getting a lot of, and I don't know why and they don't either, but the last, I would say, three months, they're getting a lot of queries from other towns on almost identical votes. So there is, and they also say there is a gray area, and I guess we found it and helped clarify it. So on a go-forward basis, all of this is going to be right here. Okay? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
If I may, I'll move to appoint town administrator Ted Alexiades and Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Irma Lauder, or his or her designee, on the board to negotiate with Boston Gulf.
I will second that, provided it's very clear that if it's not you, it's either going to be Gannon or Healy.
Well, it's going to be Paul.
On the board.
Okay.
Paul, that's why I, my idea is I talked to Ted and Betty about it weeks ago, whatever it was.
Who else would it be?
It was on the board. It was not going to be anybody else but us.
It'll be Paul.
It'll be Paul.
Okay.
That's 100% guaranteed.
That settles it down. Okay, second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, we're missing our town administrator.
You've got to do this one.
Betty, oh, I'm sorry. Have another one. At the January 8, 2015 Executive Session of the Board of Selectmen, it was voted to sign a letter to the Police Superior Officers Union relative to issues raised by one of its members. And that's not a vote, that's a statement. Okay. Betty, do you want to give the town administrator reports?
I don't have a lot to report, other than I'm hearing that there are warrant articles out there and I look forward to seeing them all by close of business on January 20.
There's going to be a line outside the door waiting to see Betty. We are going to have quite a few articles and they're going to be quite interesting. Is that fair a statement?
So are you.
Well, Paul, number one.
Well, thank you. South Hingham Working Group, ladies and gentlemen, we continue to work apace. We had a meeting on Tuesday night. We have another meeting this coming Tuesday. The more we look into it, the more complex we realize the issues are. But everybody's involved in the conversation. We had the stakeholders from Derby Street, the industrial park, as I call it, as well as Mr. Bristol. So we have a very informative conversation that's going on. We're trying to circle down to a place where we think we can make a recommendation, but we're not there yet. But I urge everybody, you know, and you don't have to live in South Hingham to go to these meetings, because it does affect the entire town, please go, because I think that the work we're doing there is very important and I, you know, I applaud Ms. Sneath and Emily Wentworth, who's doing yeoman's work, Jerry Sealan made an excellent presentation the other night. And we continue to work on the accessory bylaw under Mr. Tornoff-Dix to relish, and hopefully we'll get something on that too, so.
Jerry Sealan's presentation, I urge everybody to take a look at it. That will be up on the website and it's very insightful. Mr. G.
Thank you. I didn't know if, I saw my colleagues on the Spen Committee might be here, if anybody wanted to speak to it at all, or, I know that we, legislation was passed through the efforts of Garrett Bradley and Senator Hedlund and-
I mean, I'm glad that that- Come on, Linda, you know the rules. How quickly one forgets after being Chair of Advisory.
Linda Port, 18 Marion Street. Very good that that passed and will allow us, allow money to get funded. I hear rumors that there's $250,000 this year that will get put in and it should even out the special ed requests to the town. The other piece of it was that other legislation that we had proposed, or pieces of legislation to propose, which the selectmen and the school committee said they would take, take charge of moving forward. My sense is nothing's been done on that, but I'd love to hear what, if anything's been done on it.
I don't know, but I know this year we will have a warrant article.
This is, this was two pieces of legislation that thought was to try to get the state-
Bigger thing, yeah.
Get school committee-
I don't know, I will ask, I will ask Garrett.
It's not, it's, I mean, I think the thought was before we went, I mean, maybe it was going to go to Garrett, I remember, we were going to go to the school committees, the mass municipal, try to get a team of support to push these proposals through. I can refresh everyone's memory, I can tell.
How about if I can, yeah. How about if I-
Thank you, Linda.
Linda, I can take it up with the MMA, because I've got to go to a policy meeting on the policy committee that I sit on. One other piece of information for the general public, there will be a warrant article in 2015 to establish, and it will come from the selectmen, we talked about it Monday night at the school committee, to actually get this thing done on our side. So, finally, excellent. That's it?
The CPC has had its final meeting on making recommendations on the projects that they're going to be bringing forward this year. It's a very nice set of projects. There's a couple that our heartstrings wanted to fund, but unfortunately, there wasn't enough money, so they will go to kind of the top of the heap next year. There'll be a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen, the CPC, and the Advisory Committee on the 29th to hear all of these projects. So I ask everybody to tune in and watch that. And then the COPE Group, this is Katherine Mantius Bennett and Joyce Bennett, Joan Bennett, who have started a group and it's phenomenal what one or two people can do. These communities offer practical encouragement. They're looking to, and what they've been doing is trying to help the homeless in our area, as well as in Boston, through all these very cold, bitter days that we're having. They're doing another effort over this weekend. So if you go up to their Facebook page, if you'd like to help, I'm sure they'd love to have some input from you. These two women and the group they have, because they're very good about saying, it's not us, it's everybody that's helping us, but those are the two that spearheaded this. So if you can help, please do. Anything else? Okay. I recommend the Board enter executive session to discuss a response to an open meeting law complaint. The Board will not resume open session this evening. Roll call, vote.
I spoke to Mr. Cofflin about all this and I realize that the law allows this as a device to resolve this. I don't think this involves a negotiation, this is just a conversation, I'm not, you know, I think we can do this publicly. I don't think we need to do this privately. If the two of you want to, we will, but I think that the public's curious as to what prompted the action they took, and I don't mind having that discussion out loud.
Well, I think we're going to review what our response to the Attorney General is. So all of that will be made public as soon as we're done with it.
Yeah, I mean, Paul, I didn't know you wanted to do it in public.
I didn't either, it's the first time I've been in there.
I was like told we were supposed to be discussing response and my sense is we'll make it public, so.
Almost like immediately.
Okay. I've said my piece, so if you want to do it in there, fine.
Okay. Aye. Okay, good night, everybody. See you next week. Now we start huge sessions with warrant articles and lots of budget stuff.